I'm here. Hello. Oh my god, wait. Ah! Whoa, whoa, we're starting strong, okay? I read it already, Geki. I don't know, I'm in Kusobaki. Okay, is that better? Feeling! Thank you. I'm glad there's someone nice here. Not like Geki. Hi, Mexi! Oh, it's been so long since I saw... Mew Mew on the, on the screen. Have a happy, happy feeling! Get more than 3 hours sleep, please. Please do. So hello everyone, how are you doing? How's been your day? Okay, wait. I saw that none of you studied. But... The news is... I didn't either, so we're good. Okay, no, wait. Um... It's okay, Wandachi. We will see how it goes. I don't have something, uh... Can you even say that's a plan? No, but wait, okay, uh... Before starting, uh... Anything Japanese-like... What do you mean? It's kind of a plan, it works. I wanted to have a quick chat with all of you, like... We, we have to talk, everyone. Get ready. Now, it's actually more like a quick life update, I guess? Because of course, no, not everyone knows, but, uh... It's not serious. I mean, it is kind of serious, but it's not at the same time. Okay, whatever. The thing is, uh, there's a lot happening right now, uh, on my end. Um... I just got the notice that we have to move out from my house, like... Like, I got the notice like a, a couple of days ago. So, my mind's been all over the place, uh... The streams are gonna be a mess probably for a while. I don't know how much progress we will do studying together, but... I don't know, it's gonna be, it's gonna be a... Maybe rough couple of months. It's been since September, to be honest, because I have family over. So, I've been running around a lot. But yeah. That's mostly it. That's, that's most it. It's more, it's more so like to say that, uh... Hmm... Everything might be a bit more of a shitshow than it's normally is, I don't know. It's, it's just it. I'm not scolding, scolding any of you. Yeah. Yeah, they are a mess normally. Yeah, it will be okay. I know it will be okay, it's just that it's a lot of work and... It takes a lot of energy having to look through new places and going to see them. It's a lot of other things. Another thing is not really fun. You know the feeling? But yeah. I do hope it's really fast. Because, uh... You can sometimes hear it too, but there's a construction site, uh... Like, just outside my window. And I didn't notice how bad it was until the option... To... Not the option. Like, the need to move out, you know? Thank you, Dill, have a good sleep! Get a good rest. And I hope you have an amazing day tomorrow. Have a happy nap. I don't know what else to say. That's it, that's my news update. And this is my excuse for not studying. It's a good one. Do you, do you believe me? Because he's you, so he can. I give him permission to sleep in class. You don't have permission, you're forced to be with me here. Wandachi can't sleep during class, he's the sensei. Oh wait, no, you know what? I actually had a, a professor... At some point that slept in class. That did happen, more than once. Yeah. That was a thing. I don't know, poor man, more, maybe he was very tired. Maybe he has a, he had a tough life, I don't know. But he fell asleep during class very often. You don't think you're falling asleep in class once, really? Sleeping at school arc. It was weird, he went to the back, like, lay down, what? Just like that? Just like you, right now? I feel like that's what he is doing. I think I... I think that ha- that didn't happen to me until like university. But that's because, uh, wait, do you call this PPT? Is it a PPT? But I had this kind of professor that only read whatever was on the screen. And it wasn't a, a very fun class either, so I started, uh, falling asleep. And it was so bad! PowerPoint, yeah. Harasan! Aho! Hi, Poppy! How are you doing? How's class doing? Don't fall asleep if you're always stuck sitting right in front of the teacher. Oh no, I was in front! And I was falling asleep either way. Then I realized that didn't work and prefer to go to the back. Because it is very awkward falling asleep in class, having your professor just in front of you. That's Genki, right? Am I learning? You could say I am, I guess. How much? I'm all over the place. Class is full and full overall though, you're sleepy right now. I like that we're all talking about classes being sleepy or sleeping. Don't sleep in class, Poppy. Yeah, that's it for the news update. I just wanted to say because I, I always like being like very open and honest with all of you. Let me show you the thing. We have these today. I was, okay, I was seeing that... It is hard if you guys don't have the book to... To check it before, please. And one was talking to me about that. Uh... Maybe. Hmm hmm hmm, we could have it on Discord. I don't know. Confusing. Can it work out? Go look for my book first. You mean like now? So why are you calling mom? But you can go. Oh my child. Yeah, okay, so... What happens to me with these books, because I didn't have time to check like the first lesson? That's what I wanted to do, I wanted to check the first lesson first. Like, before even... Doing the stream. It was an open-ended question to whoever answered, okay. What can I do? I just love the donut. Oh, but yeah, because these books are kind of confusing too. But wait. Eh... What? What's that? There you go. Oh wait, no, first, before... Before you do anything at all, I need to show you something. That's it, yeah, the workbook, it's about the workbook. There's something very important you have to see with. The thing is, one, uh, has been helping me with this. And, oh, I don't remember which one is it. Wait, I don't have all of them? Let's hope it's this one. It is! I keep, uh, scan... The things. For me. I mean for us, so I could show you like, undo the workbook with all of you. I keep did this! I just noticed today! I love it so much! Okay, I'm glad it was this one. But yeah, we have these too. So we can use it as well. It does, I didn't even notice before today that I was looking like more... More carefully through it. And he gave me this, uh, a while ago. Also, I keep reading Genki as Geki, and I don't like that. Geki is the new Genki. Aho, that's gonna be cute. But yeah, I don't know what the plan is for today then. When you go through the book, like the first part is this, like... Uh... Kind of what we did last time. Which, since I didn't practice, I don't remember all of them. No? I, I didn't, I didn't learn it. Nope, I didn't. I have a good excuse of... Hiragana practice to point though. The workbook does have, uh... Hiragana and katakana practice. So, I thought about it. Hmm... This song is so funny. Okay, oh wait, hmm, so after that... Uh... Hmm... What's Genki? What's a Geki? Okay, this is all it like tells you. Okay, so this is the first thing that they teach. How bad does that look on the screen? I'm Geki! What would be even a, a Geki lesson? And don't worry, I wasn't planning on even... Going there, I don't know. Hi, Sario! How are you doing? Why do you even teach how to be a brat? You sure can do that, yeah. Very proficient! Let's go. Yeah, so this is the first, like the very, very first part of the book. When they basically tell you like, you have Hiragana, Katakana, and then your life sucks because they're stanky. Oh, I'm glad you're good, I'm, I'm doing good too. For the most part. Hiragana. I think that would be Mimas, right? Ni... Mimas? Televio Mimas? Where is the, where is the sensei? Sensei! What is that one? Is it Mite, because Mite is look what right? It is! Uh... Okay, con- conjug- do you say con- conjugations? What's the word in English? I don't know. Conjugar. But that's a whole mess. Because I realize it, I think it's Miro? I don't have a dictionary! Combine? I don't think it's combine, conjugar? Conjugar is not com- wait, no, wait. The word must be here. Somewhere. Are you asking about this? Oh, uh... How do you pronounce this? Is it Televio Mimas or Mita? I think it's Mimas because the fruit? Oh no, I know a lot of this is Spanish, how do you say it then? Mimas. Okay, it is Mimas. Do you say ru- root word? Rootilabo? Oh, oh no, this is gonna be... Do you guys wanna learn Spanish too? Yeah, it's Mimas. Televio Mimas. Is that a Genki for Spanish? I wish. I don't think, I don't think there's a... Spanish translation. How do you say the word... For conjugar? I'm glad you like the wiggle! I also like the wiggle quite a lot. How bad is, uh, a D mark? Because I'm pretty sure that's not a good one. I think you will call that a reading, means a reading of. Is that the kanyu for Miro? Mite? Wait, Mite and Miro, is it the same? Uh... Wiggle transforms and it's fine. Hmm, how do, uh... Oh, it's the same kanyu. Okay, so wait, we have Yisho, let me... Is this cheating? Me? I need to find the word for this. I don't see Miro. It's like cheating if you're taking a test, otherwise I call it learning, I love that. You put up the Miro and Miero. Resources, let's go, I like that. And thank you, I like the flower. No, there's a, hmm... What's a word? When you do the thing with the verbs, the, the inflections? Inflections? Is that the word? Like when you transform this to, I don't know, to... Mita, Mimas ta, Mite. Do you say it like inflections? Miero is a potential for si versus non-si. Hmm... Conjugate verbs? Is conjugate, uh, the word or not? I think I'm, I'm needing to learn English before learning Japanese. Conjugation, okay, so they are called the same? So you say you're conjugate, conjugating a verb? Right? Okay, let's go. I'm learning. Okay, so what was I doing? Uh, this. And everything just started because... We had to read that. Yeah, uh, um, eh. Japanese loves these conjugations, yeah, that's a... Because you also have to learn polite and... Non, non-polite, informal? Or no? Is my brain okay? Kashiroirin formal. Kasho got informal. Okay. Thank you thousand. Geeky, you should learn how to be, how to be nice. What do you mean no? Brat. Don't get paid. I won't pay you. Hmm. Yeah, these are the like the pay- pay. Banducci, you're learning too much bad stuff from Geeky lately. So no, you won't get paid nice. Once a week? Wow. Thank you. Hmm? Where can I go back? Yo. Sario. Nacho! It's Nacho. I think he has led your stray already. Yeah, this is a lot of pronunciation. And how you have to pronounce the double flowers? I feel like that's the best part of the learning new languages. Knowing that if you do it wrong, you can say something very bad. Nacho? What's a nacho? Oh, hey, Nacho! I don't like. Okay, wait, so I had a misunderstanding before with Japanese. I thought they didn't have like uh intonations. But actually they do. And they're very present, isn't it? Thank you for the lurk, Banducci. What do I do if I need you though? They have a lot of intonations and I think it changes with Oh, daya leks aru souku. Are you know the uh what's it called? I get up from carcaptor sakurahada anaxi. No, adayale. Asit osaka? Anhise konnyanachiwa instead of konichiwa. Asit kansai or sa- Inki was osaka. Okay, wait, this is other at that. Another nice thing. I have a different book where we can learn kanyu say with this. So when we start learning kanyu, we can do it like drawing the picture. And so on. Why do I feel like this music is a bit too intense for I know the difference. I don't speak Japanese now. Why why not? You should, so you can teach it. Oh, and this is called an ideogram. Wait, what? Okay, there's some really nice ones where you can learn them by like from the meaning, because it makes sense. Like having day and moon together and it ends up being bright. But how the heck do you have person on tree and that's to rest? Hi, Yose! Are we playing Project Sunbite soon? Resting under the tree, but it's not even the same kanyi. It's a nice place for an up. It is. I wonder which ones do they have in the other book. Wait, can I? Oh, I can. Oh no. Ayio. It means the same? How come? Can you use it like that? Like by itself instead of the other one? You think of the anime where MC and she may leave me down there a tree with them sleeping? Hmm. I don't think I I don't think I have seen that. I watched Inuyasha though. Does that count? He was stuck on a tree. You could say he was sleeping. Does that work? Is that good enough? You often see it on the left side of kanyu. Okay, for some reason, we have the main characters in the book. Oh. If you want to know them, here they are. I'm sure, ah, some Pikachu. I was there on their tree before. Oh, talk about Pikachu. I don't let Pokemon sleep. And I love it so much. You like Yamashita Sensei? He's our Japanese teacher. Oh my god, I read this wrong. There was no S already. I don't think this is even the start of the first lesson. Wait, what do you even have? Is it? No, it starts here. But there's more things before. We learn our greens. Okay, I feel these are like all the ones that every anime watcher should know. Ayio. I think those are basic you should try to know. What do you mean you should try to? Look at that key. They don't have konichi wasa. I wonder why a Japanese person would think if you go up to them and say konichi wasa. Wow! Welcome to I you know our streams already. Degozaro. I think I I have only heard Degozaro and Rurouni Kenshin. This morning when I woke up, there was some Japanese person queuing for dragon. How do you know it was a Japanese person? And what are their names? So I can go look. I could even do what I told you was going to do. No, mom, it's okay. Don't worry. And how did you do? How are you doing? How was your uh or how is your recuperation going? Wait, what was this surgery? Why 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 does it hurt? Is it like stone uh okay, no, I don't know. What are they called? Okay, they are called kidneys. Oh, oh my god, that's a lot. There's no mu mu size. You don't have that power. I'm on the ground, reading in pain when I Wait, what? What? I don't think I'm reading that right. He never had the power. But yeah, I do hope their recuperation goes smoothly. And then the pain goes uh away quickly. No, it won't. That may may make him feel like worse. Oh, but yeah, well, uh, we were talking about Hmm, maybe it is a good idea to have the book on the on the Discord or some or somewhere. I don't know. So everyone is able to check it. Including the week. But at least today, we're even reviewing the things that are before the first lesson, so it's okay. Very inspiring. Cuz it's been a lot. I'm a mess. No, there's a lot true. If you ask for it, there's not true. There's not any truth. What do you mean you weren't asking? Also I found the the thing you did with the the workbook. And I was laughing so hard before. And I showed everyone. I'm hoping for a quick recovery. You hate it. I hate it so much. I have such a hard time trying to read. Because I I don't like just things. Of work, let's go. I mean, you shouldn't be working. And mom, I mean this uh wait. Ah, I mean this one. I didn't know this is the first time you gave me this. I was looking through it today uh for the lesson and and I found it. Yeah. It was so funny. And yeah, look, join the dark side. Come join us in Final Fantasy forty. You say we have people talking in Japanese there too. Ah, yeah, uh even if it was written in Japanese, it doesn't mean they were Japanese. I mean, do we even know if it was well-written? I don't know if they lied. What if they did? I don't know Japanese. I kind of know. Yeah, Duke, tell us when you're when you're online so we can help you. Don't just tell geeky. I don't don't hope the people are to yourself. How could you? Wait, what? This is aisatsu, right? I'm assuming this means greetings. Am I reading it right? Aisatsu? Yeah, I hope at least everyone, including me, knows this one. Hey, konnichiwa. Ohaeyou gozaimasu. Ohaeyou. What else? Bunbanwa. Hayounara. Oyasumi nasai is such a cute one. Arigato. Arigatousaimasu. Should we say, should we start greeting each other and saying stuff like this? Each Japanese? Like in Japanese? Welcome back! Please stay. We need you. What else do we have? We have sumimasen. A lot of these have appeared on Duolingo. Yeah. Wait, I don't think I have seen this ones on Duolingo that much. Itte kimas. Tadaima. Itterashai and okari nasai. Totally sensei. Wait, is that the kanyu for aisatsu? No? What did you write? I'm scared to know. Wait, what? Really? It was a What's that? There is there a a playlist that says one hundred? Most of the seventeen ones. To He uses the kanji for love on paper bills. Can I quickly find like a playlist that goes like this? I wanna do day list. 120 day list. Oh, wait. Okay. Wow. There's a day booster. I don't know what that means. He says 120 BPM music to energize. Do you feel energized? Oh no, I love it so much! It does! Should we keep this one? There was a funk one. Disco funk. He says disco funk. I love this so much. It's supposed to be relaxing. There's a lot of workout music. On tanken. Which reminds me, okay, wait, there- there's a lot of cosplay going on on Final Fantasy XIV. Remember your uh... Costumes! For Friday! Remember your costumes! I don't have mine. I have to work on it. It's gonna be okay, everyone. It's gonna be okay. This is- take this wrong. Okay, let's go back to the other one. To energize. No, Wam! Oh no. You have to role-play the encounter. That's how it works. Oh. Oops. You see? If you cannot see it, it didn't happen. That's such a cute name. It was among the manga books. Why were you hiding your gank among the manga? I am into distract, but I see this was worth it. Don't worry, I'm gonna get distracted even if you don't try. Also, I like it so much! This is such a good finding. Don't touch Hadia! Run from there! Hey, wait, what was I saying? Oh, that- this is such a common reading thingy, but how come I don't see it that often on Duolingo? Like this one. Itte kimas tadaima. Itterashaiyan. Okari nasai. No, I never used the first lesson. Ah, wait, you weren't here, Wam! Yeah, today is lesson number zero. Zero. But yeah, I was uh, I was saying before the... The thingy that basically a loss has been going on uh, on my life and I have to move out of my place. So I haven't had much time for life. Aside that. And I wanted to check the book and be more prepared to do the first lesson. But I didn't got that. We're pretty much going through... The book together, right now. He was so cute in game. What do you mean? He's always... No, I wanna see, dude. Post a picture on Discord or something, because I cannot know. Okay, Itadakimasu is such a cute... Dude, a common one. Gochitsu samarashita. Do people really say this one often? Because I don't hear it. Yeah, you like it. I feel like... I feel like all of you should do this one. It's a polite thing to say, but do they don't say it often? You say it if you're eating a meal at someone el- ah, at someone's house. Yeah, that makes a lot of sense. But it's not something you will say at that restaurant. It means something like this was a wonderful... I'm gonna start saying that. I will say it, even if I go to a McDonald's. I'm gonna say Gochitsu samarashita. What is that, Wam? I kind of wanna read it, but at the same time, I don't wanna read it. Kadi! Hello? Okay, let me- wait. Should I try? Just because it sounds so funny. Wait, how would this- how would this go? Hayimashite. Pande chu. Yaruchoku nagakimachu. It's a winner. Hi, Kadi! How are you doing? Now say no. Only for one. Kadi! No! Wait, Yuki! Doesn't that count as saying two by itself? I said a lot of them. How was your nap, by the way? Or- or not nap, how do you say? Yeah, that's pretty much how you introduce yourself if you ignored the two. Hayimashite. Name. Who's? Who's what? Wait, weren't you s- what? Wait, am I getting confused? Weren't you sleeping? And you have to go work, in a way? Or you say the other way around? And how was your sleep? Oh, here you have the- the translation. Banducci, you see? You're getting bad influences. You were too tired, I can imagine. I hope this week goes quickly, so I can have my kari. Brandoochi! That's so perfect. Okay, wait. We're gonna hit the ad break right now, and I'm getting so hungry. So... I'm gonna think it's time to eat something. No! Not Brandoochi! You two stay away from each other. Okay, wait. I think after this is the first lesson. Forget it. It's ad break. What are you guys doing? Wait! It wasn't... Wow, you're such a snitch. And nobody was supposed to know it was me. Also, I have snacks. Thank you! You have proof! What do you mean you have proof? I'm eating cereal, actually. It's not really a snack. But it didn't put milk. What's a blue? Also, wait, what's a playlist? I think I can see it. Oh, he's so cute! Okay, I clipped it. No! It was me all along. By what? Let me do this. Let me tell. Let me tell you. Why am I talking so fast? Tell me. Let me tell you. You're not okay. I'm sorry. Hey. Hmm, okay, maybe if I. Why are you adding to it? You didn't mean to. Why are you speaking for mom? Ahah. Haha. Haha, you see? I'm sorry for the regret. Am I sorry? Lokiya. Hey, wait, what were we doing? Okay, this is the same from before. And this is just explaining the culture from. Oin, I guess? Mm-hmm. Oh. Okay, this is nice. Cause they're making difference between expressions. Haha. Hm. Ah, let's. Yeah, what do we have? Ohio between friends. Ohio was say must. Less intimate acquaintance. That's so specific. What is a less intimate acquaintance? Okay, so maybe. Each stream we to uh greet each other with Ohio. It's Japanese streaming. So even if you're n- not learning Japanese, learn your Ohio. Is sayonara. Haha. Haha. Yeah, there you have it. Learn. Learn it. When I like. Yeah, mata. When I like, mata ista. You know what? I assume it out of it, what? What do you mean? Everyone must learn Japanese. Huh. Yeah, you can learn your. Mata ne. I like that one. Mata ne. Hmm. Also, I learned that you just have to change the last word. Like, oh, mata ista is uh. See you tomorrow. Because ashta is tomorrow. And daishu is. Wait. So you say. Mataraishu is. You're saying. You're. And I just learned that word because it sounds like Pokemon. Right? Haha. Huh. Mata, that's close enough, I guess. Minus three points. Haha. Huh. Huh. I'm not giving you points, I'm taking them away. Haha. Wait, what was the question we had last time? Wasn't it with I'm sorry? You have it here. Look at that long word. It's more than one, no? Itterashai itakimasu. Uh. Tadaima. Okairinasai. Yeah, the one where they supposed to on Discord. It was on, ah, it was that. Like for asking something. Nega. Nega. Hi, Lil. Hello. How are you doing? How's your day going? Uh, so is not this one? No. We got to the practice. An. An what? Ansho? Ansho? Are you singing something? Let's go productive day. Good job, Lex. I'm glad you're doing good. Huh. Wait, what if you guys act the following situation? What would you say? It is one o'clock in the afternoon. Wait, no. Haha. I know you're supposed to use say the word, I guess. Like, it is one o'clock in the afternoon, you see your neighbor Yamada. So. Haha. To look plain Japanese. What, what would you say to your neighbor Yamada? Huh. Afternoon is. Is it still Konichiwa or is? Haha. Haha. Wait, wait. You think they're not. What did you say? Yeah, you have to say it. Oh, wait. Haha. 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 Yeah, this is just to use the the things we just. Supposedly allegedly learn. One o'clock in the afternoon will just be. No, I'm actually confused. Is it Konichiwa or is it Konbawa? Is Konbawa later? Konichiwa? Like just Konichiwa Yamadasan? Wait, is it Konbawa? Is it? It's because it's an O? Oh, no. Nothing happened. Konichiwa, I believe is all around. I don't think that's what Mr. Yamada think. Oh, wait. Eh. I think it's supposed to mean something else? What? Haha, why are you leaving? Hmm. Yeah, Konichiwa for afternoon and evening. Yeah, that's true. Evening is. What's evening? What is evening in? If noon is maybe the. Afternoon. Is it afternoon? Okay. What are we? Okay, but the thing is, the first one should be. Konichiwa. Evening is like night with us, see? Huh. Huh. I like that. So you come to class in the morning, greet your teacher, greet your friends. Okay, greet, greet chat. Haha. Japanese. Huh. You guys are such a mess. This is the one you have to learn. You have to say Ohio, Ohio. Ohio chat. Thank you, mom. I give you all the points. Haha. 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 Huh. Okay, you're a dadorama. Asas. Okay, what is? An acrolytic train. You stepped on someone's foot. I know that one is supposed to be. Sumimasen. But. I believe you can say a lot of things if someone steps on. Or you step on some. Yeah, that one's not. Supposed to be. You drop your book, someone pick it up for you. Huh. Is it a senpai? Do he get points for not copying? He's clearly copying. Yeah, arigatosaimas. And you do a wink. You totally deserve it. Haha. He's gonna take them away, no? It is eight o'clock at night. You happen to meet your teacher at the convenience. Okay, so eight o'clock will be evening then. That will be Konbawa. He has to learn how to Konbawa. Huh. Haha. Konbawa. Sensei. You're watching TV with your host. Host family? That's a host fam. Oh, wait, is it host family like when they uh? Why did, what, what? Why did you give me a button and then give me? What's it? Oh, yeah, but. So when you go. But people are studying abroad. Bro. On the liquid alcohol. I feel so odd to me. But also sounds. Would you do that, by the way? If you have the opportunity, would you go and live with a host family? That you don't know anything about? No? No, no, you. Time to go sleep. The oyasuminasai. Oyasumi. Oh, I always confuse this one. When. You are leaving home, you say. Which one is it? Ittekimasu. Maybe. I think I would. I think I will try it. You could never handle my insanity, that's true. I support you on this. When you come back. Okairi? No. Ka is when someone's welcoming. You're too awkward. I'm such an introvert, it would be so awkward to live with a family. It would even be awkward to live back with my actual family. You would just say Konichiwa. I have such a hard time remembering this one. Tadaima. Ah, Tadaima. This is something that you say and the other person asks. So when you. Leave home, you say. Ittekimasu and. The other person says. Itterashai? Itterashai. And when you come back, you say Tadaima and. The other person says okairi. I always found this one so nice uh. On anime. Like you used to be a sweet tada. Like you used to be a sweet tada. That's such a good one though. Maybe that's how we will remember. You're Asian and we don't even say stuff like that. You don't? You don't have something like this? I like that tada. Tada. Ima. Kikiru. I don't think I ever got a welcome back from. I gave you one of Final Fantasy forty, if that ever comes. But that's also because I'm appropriating your room. Okay, you're going to start eating. Like how now I'm eating. You say itadakimasu. And you have finished eating. Yeah, itadakimasu. And finishing, you said. Uh, gochisousama deshita. Even if you're at a McDonald's, I learned that. I have. What do you mean Final Fantasy will never come? It comes to me. Also, wait, I forgot to tell you, Wanducci, but we are planning on make a character with your name. Like not, not a chara- was it a retainer, I believe? You will have to be here for us to know how to make it look like. Oh, you think you don't express love and affection, at least vocally or physically? There's so much, there's so many ways to express love anyways. We do they have you eaten yet or others who that that's so. Okay. I think that's such a cute way of showing affection. Retainer Uchi. Should that be the name? Retainer Uchi. You're the biggest sonderer. Class activity. No, we're skipping the class. Oh, wait. Numbers. You can learn your numbers. Two. Uh? Two. Yi? Two yi. You got numbers? That's who? I say it. Probably everyone here says yours under. Can we do that? Making, making you look like Sweet White? No. We lost our. Our playlist. It's finished. What do I do now? Re. Masero. I think I helped her that. Would I help her settle? Is that how we are checking now? Ah. Maru? Maru? Porero? I think I have never heard Maru. There's. Isn't there like a lot of exceptions on numbers too? So even if you know how to count. One to ten. And yeah, counters are a thing too. Pero. De. Yeah, I don't know yon. Yon. I also prefer saying yon because of chi and chi. That sound too similar and I cannot make the difference. Same with uh seven. I prefer saying nana. Because saying the other one is difficult. Chi chi. Chi chi. Chi chi. Chi chi. It's hard. Chi. Yeah, I I counted as ichinisan yon. You live in an apartment where there was no fourth floor? I like that it's just, you're you're just skipping the. Like the number. Well, you like to think there's actual, there's an actual fourth floor that does it. Fourth floor is the ghost floor. Yeah, I believe most people know. Wait, I actually think most people know how to count up to ten on Japanese. But maybe you just don't know. How to do the rest. Even though it's. Ichinisan. Yon. Orok nana. Hachi. I like you more than ku. Yu. For nine. Something is not very easy. Never plan anyone say ku. Hmm. I know things for you. Yu. Yeah, and then you use. With you, which is ten with the rest. So yuichi. Jun. Jusan. Yu yon. Yu wo. That's true. You say ku for September. Ku latsu. Oh, and that's part of the exceptions actually. For, is it for April? You said shi natsu? Ah. Hmm. I forgot. I feel like there's so many customs that haven't appeared yet. Yeah, that's another one. Usually you said uh yon for number four. But for April, you say shi natsu. Wait, there's just up to hyaku. Hakimasu. One hundred is hyaku, one thousand is. What do you remember on the book? I cannot remember. I remember there was a play on words on. On, what's the name in English? The movie. Of poor Chihiro. Okay, no. There's no way I can try and remember. My brain is not cooperating. Oh, wait. We have exercises. Benshu. Why are we trying to remember? Wait, what's uh one thousand? We have magnificent grits. There was an example. Where do you get all of this one? How can you come uh so quickly with those? Sen. Oh, that's it. So I remember in the movie uh El viaje de Chihiro. I don't know what it's called in in. In English. Or I don't know it even in. In Japanese. Chihiro no sen no kame kakushi? It's something like. Sen mon sakura? Read the wa- oh. Yeah, I remember in the, in the movie uh since she is called Chihiro and she is one reading for. One thousand. When they change her name, they take away like the last hanji, I believe. So she becomes sen. And that's the only way I learned this kanji. Chihiro's dream. I remember the will. I don't remember the useful. I remember that. That's why Chihiro ends up being called Sen. Okay, I'm to read the numbers. Five is wo, right? Nine is you. Seven, nana. One, ti. Ten is you. Eight, hachi. Two is ni. Four is non and three is san. And here it comes out. Wait, are they? They're making me do math? How dare they? That's other difficulty and has nothing to do with Japanese. You can do addition. Forty-five can. Wait, okay, the, the second one. Forty-five. Forty-five. Uh. Yon you wo? Is it yon you wo? Po. Good song. Eighty-three. Hachi you san. Why are numbers sound so weird? Nineteen should be ju ku. What's the other one? Seventy-six. That's. No, no, what? Yu hachi no. Wait. I say it wrong, I said. Did I say it the other way around? It's you. Yu hachi. Let's go, Wanducci! I don't know what words you're doing before, but. Let's go. It doesn't seem like it was something fun, so nice. I think there's an app, website that let you download the audio from Nix. Really? Oh, I need to get that. That would be nice to have. Nanayu. I think it's nana. Nanayu? Nanayu. Oh, nanayu ro. Po. Look, this song sounds. It's a fifty-two. Uh. Boju. Ni. Boju ni. One hundred is hyaku. Fifty-eight is. Sanju hachi. No, nanayu. Which one? Seventy? Seventy is nanayu. Nanayu. Oh, you mean because they write it like with the. Ikriega. Wait, what's the name? I'm having so many English problems while trying to do this. I know, my sister. I'm not sure if the confusion was because they write. You're writing the with. Okay, forget it. I don't know what it goes, so I cannot say it. I love it a Greek eye. I love it a Greek eye. Sixty-one. Roku you. Ju roku. Roku you. Roku you. Roku you ichi. Oh, why? Why? That's it. I don't even know if that was the confusion, but. Maybe it was because you were using. A Y to write you. Twenty-four is. Jun ni. No, mi you. I keep saying the other way. Mi you yon. Ninety-seven. Yu you nana? I'm not doing addition. We're not doing. I need to get the. The audio. That would be nice. Also, since since we can know the actual answer. Oh! Wait! We finally got to the first lesson. Let's go. Now, this is when the stream ends. Listen. I get distracted, okay? This was actually a nice way to see uh. If we can just go through the book together like. It's actually not that bad. So even if I don't have the time to review the thing, it's fine. We'll just do it like. No, Wanducci, I'm so sorry. It's okay. The the next streams are gonna be longer. I'm hoping for a a winner next week. It's just that this week has been a long. But I don't want to make longer streams again. When's our next twelve hours? Hmm. Should I tell you? Actually, that's gonna happen. Yeah. Actually, there is gonna be a thing. Hmm. No, there will never go out twenty-four hours. No. No. There's never a. Okay, no. Real talk, I don't think twenty-four hours are a good idea. Neither for you or for me. Cause we will just be here trying to force ourselves to go through twenty-four hours. Whatever. And I will get too sleepy. And maybe cranky. And you don't wanna. Hopefully. Twenty-four times. At one point, I would like to do a soba kondo. But. That's pretty much you are here. All day and then you asleep. But we still have a long waiting. For that to happen. I believe. You can't pause the timer when. You're dropping bombs. I just uh it's in the. Okay, that's stuff that's gonna happen. So now. The twelve-hour stream though, that will happen soon. And as usual, it's probably. No, it is gonna be at the end of the month. So. We will see. What what will I plan for that day? But yeah, I mean, you might not make it. Yeah, it's okay. Don't worry about it. You have to choose a day, but. Hmm. Actually, I'm not sure when's gonna happen. Okay, wait, let me. I finished him. So for next week, I can say that we officially can start uh doing lessons. Like the actual. I don't think they're that long, so we should be able to. A whole lesson during one stream. I'm not sure. Okay, they are kind of long. We will see. This time, I would like to. I would like to review it before stream though, so I can come more prepared. And I want to find the audio thing. Oh, you found the audio. Let's go. What? Oh, if we study, okay. I was doing a confusion. Hmm, I'm pretty sure I wanted to sing something else. But I can't remember. Hehe, thank you for the pot. Okay, no, I can't remember. So. If I ever remember, I will tell you through Discord or. Just the next stream, I guess. I don't know. I have a feeling I'm missing something. I don't know. Hopefully, it's nothing important. You forgot it was probably a lie. No! And I'll see you tomorrow morning. Tomorrow morning? Yeah, tomorrow morning at. Please. Nine AM. Nine AM, yes. Let's go. Oh. There you go. You have a root this time, I don't know. Yeah, I will see you tomorrow. I'm just gonna go play for a while now. Thank you so much, everyone. You're the best. It's a plap plap, the music. It's not the lady. Thank you all for being here. I hope from next week uh. I can finally start my usual schedule and my usual. Streaming. This is be so. Weird streaming for that short. I love you guys. I'll see you. Thank you so much. Have a good night. Bye bye. Hi. Oh, thank you so much. I'm really glad you like. That's all I need on. Hope you guys enjoy. Bye bye, everyone. Mata shita. Mata shita.